I now call this meeting to order. Could we please have the roll call to show that all members are present either telephonically with Mr. Wager or the rest of us in person? And could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Dean, could you read the mission statement, please?
Yes, ma'am. Upsher County Schools is committed to creating a united community for educational excellence.
Do we have any agenda adjustments?
No, ma'am, as presented this evening.
Could I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented? So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Delegations?
We have none this evening.
Superintendent's update?
Yes, I have several things that I do want to share with you this evening. One of those, which is pressing on many people's minds and hearts as to what we're going to do regarding the levy. So I thought that we would start there this evening. So, of course, we all know that the defeat of the levy in May was a reminder of the sentiment across the county that in the past, tax dollars have not been used as county residents trusted the Upsher County Board to utilize. During this time of takeover, much has been accomplished and put in place to begin rebuilding this trust. We've had an audit completed by the West Virginia Auditor's Office that identified 21 specific areas we were not in compliance with. Once identified, a work plan was constructed, and we continue to work through this plan to remove as many findings as possible before the next annual audit. Specifically, we have addressed the following areas. In purchasing, we have made progress towards making sure that we have a purchase order request prior to services being rendered and that proper invoicing is received for payment. As you can well imagine, when those processes were not in place, that's one of the big lifts that we continue to work on. We also are working towards the publication of the financial statements, which had not been done properly over the last several years. So West Virginia Code 1893A did change timelines and publications for this coming year. We have 120 days after the beginning of the fiscal year to publish. It now can be published via legal ad or on the website, but if you do it on the website, there are a multitude of conditions to meet, so we just feel that we are going to continue with the same way of publishing a legal ad in the paper. We also recited for expenditures over budget. That's being monitored monthly by the WVDE through object codes with our local monitoring by function codes. Somewhat of a disconnect, but they do speak so that they understand what each other is looking for. In personnel, contracts were prepared for fiscal year '24, and we are in the process of being prepared for those for the fiscal year of '25. Not included, but is now going to be included moving forward are substitute employees. We did contract coaches last year, and we will contract extracurricular. We also need to work on a list of items that were to be checked in our personnel files. That's been generated, and we will be pulling approximately 20 to 30 files a month to do an internal audit, and we are going to begin that at the end of July of 2024. We recited for leases, that those were not being handled in a proper way and according to GAZBIE. So that's a work in progress, as well as what Sarah refers to as SABITA. But what SABITA stands for is Subscription-Based Information Technology Arrangements, and that is a work in progress. By the way, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned, I will give you a copy of my notes. I will send these to you so that you don't have to worry about taking notes. Thank you. I apologize before I started. Controls over financial statement preparation. The WVDE provides those templates for the preparation, and we are using those as directed. Also included in that piece was about trainings for the CSBO. She has attended every offered training since the fall of 2023. Sarah and I did attend a special training that they had for new CSBOs and superintendents in the fall of 2023. That was very good for both of us. The excess levy, it was noted that the funds had been sent to the individual schools. All of those funds have been returned to us at the board office, and all expenditures related to the excess levy will run through the finance office as soon as they were recovered. Record of official bonds, that was addressed, and we will need to bond you as the new board president. Some bonds were not in place appropriately. The treasurer, Sarah, was not bonded at the amount that she should have been bonded. That has also been taken care of, and those also need to be filed with local officials. That was not occurring either. That is now being done. Official minutes of the board. All agendas and official minutes are to be prepared and posted to the county school's website within a proper timeline, beginning with FY '25. We are starting to post all agendas on the front door as you enter the board office. That way, those who are coming into the board also have an opportunity to see what actions are being dealt with in each of the meetings. We're also sharing them electronically with local media, including the Record Delta and my Buchanan, so that we can keep the public informed. Unclaimed property, this is a work in progress as the finance office is reorganizing. There is nothing in place currently with processes and procedures on handable about locating and then seeking and getting unclaimed property that might be related to the Upsher County Schools. So that is something that they are working on. Written policies, the complete policy manual's been published, and it's been on the county website since July 17th. Updates will be addressed. I have been informed by Miola, a huge update is coming on August the 1st, so we will work through that as well. Retention of records, training was held on February 23rd, 2024 with principals, financial secretaries, and directors, and they all received a copy of the schedule. But we are going to do so again in the fall of 2024 because we do have multiple changes in administration at our schools, as well as some movement among service personnel. Maintenance of records, so the CSBO maintains all required records, and she does keep them in a notebook behind her desk. That was being done haphazardly prior to Sarah taking over, so she now keeps that notebook behind her desk in case there are any questions that she has that opportunity to refer back to those. Bidding procedures, all the employees have been trained on procedures on the 23rd of February. We continue to train and work through those bidding processes and procedures, and Mr. Sisk has really taken a lead role in making sure that people are doing what they're supposed to be doing and making sure that those things get posted appropriately. Timeliness of deposits, Sarah is making those deposits in a timely manner. Controls over expenditures, referred to a construction project that had been completed, and there were some concerns about wage an hour and where we're doing, and I'm sorry that the term just left me, where we were paying our contractors. I'm sorry, I can't, it's a federal term, I'm sorry, it's just left me.
They just make them wages.
Thank you. Thank you. They just make them wages. Special tests and provisions of child nutrition, we are continuing to try to recover any bills that are past due from employees or others who may come into the building, and they have an outstanding balance. Activities allowed or unallowed, this has been addressed and continues to be an issue. We do have the corrective action taking place. If this is not followed, they're going to get a verbal warning, second time it will be a written warning, and the third time, they will lose privileges if they can't follow policy and procedure. So that is going to be very important as we move forward without the levy right now. Equipment and real property management, they are working on this for items purchased through other means. Technology that was purchased through ESER, we pass, because we've had to be able to report that out to the department each time we have a monitoring thing with them. The second area that we've been working on is the Sharing of Figures monthly at board meetings, so the public knows what our revenues and expenditures are by month. We're also going to start sharing purchase orders that are over the amount that county level personnel can approve and how any carryover money is being spent. That is important for folks to understand where those funds are going. Rebuilding the trust, of course, within the community is going to take time, and we're going to have to remain very transparent in anything that deals with finances. We're going to continue to do our best to serve the citizens and students of Upsher County in a sound and fiscally responsible manner. We have adjusted our budgets to move forward without the levy this year, and are going to continue to make sure that any decisions are made, have a student at the center of those decisions, so that the money gets to the level where it should be, which is down to our students. We've sought a lot of feedback from a lot of different people across the county on whether to run the excess levy again in the November general election. We have found that the support is just not there and have to realize that time and transparency are two things that are needed before bringing something back before the voters once again. We need to work on a workable plan that several are involved in, that supports our students in the most prudent manner. We will not be running an excess levy in the November general election. Now is not the time. While some will disagree with this, and I understand because I've had several conversations with those who think that we would be successful, until we bring to the yes side enough votes to pass by continuing to rebuild trust and demonstrating transparency, we do stand a chance of losing and losing larger again. As an educational community dedicated to excellence, we need everyone from the top down and the bottom up to become accountable in fulfilling their duties to our students and the broader learning community, demonstrating that we are on a path to improved outcomes with transparency and trust being built all along the way. So we are not going to run the levy again, and I know this will put financial strain in some areas, but it's amazing when you start to sit down and you look at available funds, what you can find and how we can work through and make it so that it does not impact our students to the level that we were afraid it would, particularly in the classroom. I know that Mr. Parker had asked several questions about bidding and advertising, so I wanted to give all of you a copy of 8200, the bidding procedures, about where they have to be advertised, et cetera. I was, I thought I was okay with it last time, but in Policy 8200, they are not required to be published in a local paper like the Record Delta. So when we advertise, we do try to reach a broad audience, but we also take the phone off and call people, particularly vendors that we have had a good working relationship with in the past, that we want them to know that we're putting those bids out there so that they can consider whether they want to bid or not. It's just being good, you know, it's doing good business. So some of the things that Mr. Parker asked about last time included about utility bills and not having a purchase order. We are not required to have a purchase order for those. Also, a question about the pro officers and overtime, Mr. Parker, I was not sure about. I do now know that they are turning those into the sheriff's office, and they share with us. Most of those were extracurricular activities that they attended. This year, there is a change addressed. They will not be compensated monetarily, but they will receive compensatory time for that. That is just something that they all sat down and worked out and feel that that's better moving forward. There was a concern about some names being on things that should not have been there. We are working hard to make sure that those are redacted moving forward. A question about Vector Solutions, about the renewal, it is a full course training library which we select from, is what it is, and this is the document that we get each year from the department, which is about eight pages long, and it divides it about, up about required trainings. So we do use Vector as a way to help us be able to put that together for our employees to use that. BRIM, it is required to be carried, and the cost is based off of claims and the formula they apply to determine what that looks like for counties. I do know that we all had a significant increase last year that followed us into fiscal year '24, and that was due to an adjustment based on claims and losses paid out through BRIM, and they are our liability cover, carrier. Property is covered through Westfield with our local agent, Jamie Powell. INCova is the carrier for workers' compensation. We will see that the cost to cover for the next year is on tonight's agenda. I am working on return to duty with employees to try and reduce costs in this area, and our local advisors have been in and met with me a couple of times so that we continue to work towards a decrease in what that looks like as a payout from the county. Contractors and subcontractors, some of the items that were listed are secured during the bidding process and are not included with POs because that gets rather voluminous. We do not pay vendors or contractors until we have all the necessary paperwork and the steps, including tax department permit that says we can release the funds, because we have to look at Orca's Comp, Tax Department, and another area, unemployment. Yes, there were some POs that still showed after an obligation occurred, as we did have pointed out in the annual audit, so we're going to have another training this year, and we are really buckling down on folks regarding those, because that is one of the largest areas of concern, and that's why we said you get a verbal warning, a written warning, and then you lose your privileges. So we kind of have to be a little tough on people. The next thing I want to share with you is the strategic plan. That's what this notebook is kind of all about that I have. We do post the goals, et cetera, on our website once we have an approval from the department, but our goals are kind of simple, but they weren't before. Like I said, they only had one. And by '28, '29, all schools will reach their annual proficiency targets each year in English Language Arts, so that's a yearly look that we're going to see and track. By '28, '29, all schools will reach their annual proficiency targets each year in mathematics. By '28, '29, Upsher County Schools will develop and implement a comprehensive, multi-tiered system of support. I can tell you that that's already underway. By '28, '29, Upsher County Schools will achieve a daily attendance rate of 95% or greater and a chronic absence rate of 10% or lower. Casey Basin has been working very hard on some things to help us work through and accomplish that in a better manner. I did provide to each of you a copy of the board member self appraisal results, and need to talk a little bit about what happened after this. So Mr. Parker and Mrs. King did not get to participate in this, so this is from the five members that served up until you all came on with those results. They're going to be posted online as required after we set your goals. That is a requirement of '23, '22 that you all completed, and everything is posted by August 15th of every year. The results do help us develop goals for the board over the next fiscal year. I would like to propose that we do a work session and work through the development of those goals and then bring them back after the state approves those and share those then, of course, with everyone at our next meeting, and I'm not sure if everyone would be available on Tuesday, August the 6th at 10:00 a.m. for that informational meeting.
I would not.
You are not?
I'm not.
I would not be.
Okay. Are you gone that whole week?
No, I'm gone just that day.
Just that day?
Just that day.
Okay.
I'm going the whole week. Yes, it's me and you.
I could move it, I could move it to another day that week.
I'll move it to where we all can be there, I guess.
She's, she's going to be gone.
Does it have to be that week?
It, well, in order for us to be able to get approval and get it posted by the 15th so we don't get in trouble for not following accountability.
What about August 2nd?
Let me pull up my calendar.
I can change this. I can be there the 6th. I'll just change.
Jan cannot.
I cannot.
Mr. Parker cannot.
I can in the afternoon, but I cannot in the morning.
Should be able to.
Should you do in the afternoon? Is, is one o'clock okay or two o'clock? Which is, which do you prefer?
Two would work better for me.
Two? All right, well, let's set that then for August the 6th at two. Mr. Wager, does that meet with you?
As far as I know, that's okay.
Okay. And we'll be in the board conference room, and we will look at the results of this, and then we will determine, and I'll have some example goals that other boards have set, just so that you have an idea of what those look like. We're also going to need to determine who is going to serve on the Extension Service Committee and the 4-H Foundation. Those were two opportunities that I was unaware of until they called. I do believe that Dr. Samples may have served on those all the years that she was on the board. I can't find anything in the official minutes showing us when that was last voted on or anything. It was not two of the areas that I asked Ms. Blatt to approve for us to move forward. So when I ask, Tammy said that it was on the agenda and that it was voted on, but I cannot find it. What I'd like to do is I'd like to propose to bring that to you again on August the 6th in the afternoon, so that we can determine who we would put in both of those positions. And I know, Susan, you were not here that first meeting, so if there's something that you might be interested in filling in there, because I know Mr. Parker took on two, and maybe you'd like to give one of those up, so, you know, so we can look at those. And we'll also add any last minute employment that we need to, so that those folks can be here on August the 12th when new employees, when all employees return. That's the next piece. Employees do return to work on August 12th, and we're going to begin with our opening here in the high school auditorium at 8:00 a.m. We're going to have a guest speaker that day, and we're going to honor our teacher and service personnel of this past school year. Unfortunately, neither one were chosen as finalists for those awards this year, but I think they're great representatives, and I do want to honor them in front of our entire staff. You're welcome to attend if you're available. I have put together a personal letter for each employee that will be being mailed out. I just need to sign all 500 of whatever that they are, and we will get those mailed out. I decided to do this because I can remember when I was an employee in Marion County, we always got that letter, and it was just a nice way to welcome everyone back and just kind of focus on, on the year ahead. So I decided to, to do that this year. We are going to have our Principals Academy on July 29th through the 31st. It is three very full days. It's a lot of information for them, but what we're anticipating is actually helping them draft their opening agendas that they need to cover with their employees when the employees are back with them. I also provided you with a new organizational flow chart. In that, the only position that is not filled, but we do anticipate filling soon, is in the finance office. We also will post this on our website for the public so that they can see who's what, where, and how. You will notice that Michelle Blatt, she's the grand pooh ball over all of it, and then it just kind of works its way down. But that's, that's for you, so you can reference that and you don't have to continue to go back and forth to the actual website. I do believe that's, that's it.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Concerning the 21 financial findings, I think it was 21.
Yes.
Has the state determined who is accountable for that, since we had to pay back $814,000 to the state? How do they determine who's responsible?
Mr. Wager, that audit covered the entire fiscal year of all activities for '23, so there is not a determination of who, who is responsible for different things. That was a separate piece that was part of the takeover process, and I don't, I don't, I don't have any further updated information on any of that.
Is that part of the federal investigation?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. So there's, there's been nothing to this point.
All right, thank you.
You're more than welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Let's move on to item seven, minutes, policies, contracts, and agreements.
On the item six of the board member committee meeting.
Yes.
Update. I did attend the Upsher County Parkland Recreation Advisory Board X. I did attend the Upstate County Parkland Recreation Advisory Board Excellent Meeting. They reported on the mountain bike trails event they had. It was outstanding for the first, first go around in that vote. They were seventh event, and I think there were nine total. So they did an excellent job. Season is going well. We were able to go through and provide the board on some agenda and open meetings requirements and getting more in line with, with those items. Overall, an excellent meeting. I was unable to attend the Stockton, Houston Board due to a family number being in the hospital, but hope to attend an excellent. That's what I had.
Thank you.
You all have been provided the minutes from the July 1st meeting and the regular meeting through July 9th. Do we have a motion to accept those, or did anyone see any problems?
I do have a couple of clarifications or just questions. Under Mr. Wager's report, I have no idea what an NOCTI is.
Oh, NOCTI, that's, that's their certification test.
Okay. I don't know if we can spell it out instead of using acronyms or not. And the way I understand this is the state has approved these minutes as presented in our.
Yes.
The, again, from my perspective, like step D, step 7D, if we could spell out what that is in the future, if they're willing to do that. And the acronyms under the MOU, species like CCWD, and it says all schools. And it was noted in the meeting that Hodginsville is not covered under that agreement. It's a separate agreement.
Yes. And we're still working on that agreement.
Yeah.
I'll add that as a change to the minutes.
Okay. I mean, it just, when someone's reading it, and they don't stop reading, it says all.
Yes.
And the, under legal matters, the code reference is not cited. Of course, it's West Virginia 69A-4, and then there should be numbers after that for the specific code reference as it relates to that.
So the language that is there is what was provided by the attorney?
I understand.
If you would, if you would like, we can add, we certainly can add that.
And Mrs. Dean did cite the specific code when she was?
Yeah, she cited West Virginia 69A-4. Even there's an expanded for a specific under those exceptions. I think there's 12 exceptions. But, I mean, we did state that in going in, and it probably should be stated in the minutes.
Sure, we'll, we'll make that change.
Yeah. And again, I'm concerned that the state approved under agreements just the word Xerox with no explanation of what that is in the minutes. Five years from now, someone's going to look at that and have no idea. But that's not for us to approve, but that's my question.
Yes, correct.
That's correct, but they could go back to the notes that come with the agendas and the workup that is done at the board office in preparation for the meetings.
I understand that. If someone's reading the official minutes five years in the future and they see the words Xerox, they will have no idea of the action taken.
Under agreements, yes.
So noted.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes with the two corrections as specified by Mr. Parker? Yeah, I'm going to. Second, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are on to contracts.
Yeah. Here's the contract for Ms. Deasy. There is a mistake in number six because it does say that the service provider will work in contact, and it's supposed to say will work and in concert with and report all activities to Mrs. Ann Osborne and Mrs. Kristy Miller, superintendent.
Does anyone have any questions about the contracts?
I want to ask you a question.
Yes.
In the past, before we were taken over and the state is now in charge of our finances, when we got a contract, it always would say how much the contract is for and who is responsible for paying. Does that mean the state is responsible now?
No, it says in the contract here for her, under calculation of fees and compensation, that her hourly rate for service providers professional services $100, and that should say per hour. The contract shall not exceed the contract total of 100 hours per semester, up to 20 hours per month.
Okay.
It is, it is stated in there.
And the other three contracts?
The other three contracts was ZONAR. That total is also in the contract. It's $15,120.
And the county's paying that, I take it?
Yes, the county does pay that through transportation. The huddle is $9,200.
Who pays that?
The high school does.
Okay. Same with the video, Sarah?
That's all the same thing.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. All right, I was just curious.
It's fine.
Couple of things.
Thank you.
Clarification on the ZONAR.
Yes.
I understand that the state approved it. The terms and conditions that are in our, in our packet, the date approved as they are in our packet?
Yes, because they had, the, we also have a copy of the West Virginia 96 No Debt affidavit and all of those things signed by the company.
Okay, that's, that.
That, that.
That wasn't in our packet.
Correct, I don't include those.
Okay, because that was a lot of my concern.
Yes, so with those, with the West Virginia 96, that does take away those contract terms that has responsibilities, limitation of liability, et cetera.
Okay. Yeah, I, I've seen those. I just didn't see it in our, in our packet, and I was concerned. Is there a problem with, and I don't remember that, if there's a non appropriation clause in the, in that addendum, that was on chapter, on item 13, 13.1, on page three, it's a three year contract.
Correct, and that, that, we have had this in place with them for multiple years, and it does come through one of the state-approved vendors.
So you can enter into multi?
We can after so many years.
I'm used to a non appropriation clause.
Yeah.
Moving on to agreements.
Yes, we have the agreement with West Virginia Wesleyan and junior nursing students. We have an affiliation agreement between West Virginia Wesleyan and Athletic Training Program. That program is rebuilding, which is wonderful. We also have an agreement with Wesleyan and the Clinical Teacher of Record Partnership that has to be renewed annually so that we can accept CTRs and others in our schools. You also have, we have one with Lyndale State University for pre-service teachers, and we have parent and family engagement policy that is required as part of Title I, and we must do that each year.
I hate to be a stuck record, but I do have some clarifications. If the state approved as presented in our packet of information.
Yes, sir.
On the West Virginia Wesleyan.
Which, which one?
Ah, the first one, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine.
Junior Nursing, yes, I'm sorry. Do they provide a certificate of insurance as listed in item I?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Do we routinely, or does the state routinely request listing the Upstate County Board of Education as an additional insurer?
Yes, we do ask them to include that on the liability policies.
Okay, so the certificate of insurance should.
Should list that.
Should list that, should note that.
Yes.
I haven't seen that on some of them. Again, item M, where it talks about negligence, I'm, I'm used to seeing gross negligence versus simple negligence, which is a different standard in legal matters. Under item B, the agency shall, physical facilities, no problem there, and equipment necessary. That's pretty open-ended when it says equipment necessary. I didn't, I don't know what that entails.
Well, in the past, it's whatever equipment we are utilizing within that, that nursing realm.
Yeah, I, I didn't know, because there's no restriction. It just says necessarily equipment. And sort of like in the athletic training, the next one for, but then, item one, responsibility of Buckhannon Upstate High School and all other items necessary for the education. Again, that's pretty open-ended. And one question I do have, was this changed, did the state change this to Upstate County Schools versus Buckhannon Upstate High School? Because Buckhannon Upstate High School is not an illegal entity to sue or be sued.
That is correct, but the services are being rendered here, and Buckhannon Upstate High School cannot enter into any contract or agreement solely as themselves.
Right.
So they do name, they do name Buckhannon Upstate High School as where the, the process and procedures will actually take place with those students.
Okay.
So then no one here will be signing this.
Okay, because I didn't see Upstate County Schools anywhere in this athletic training program contract. It talks about the responsibility of Buckhannon Upstate High School. I didn't see Upstate County Schools that I could find.
Right.
And again, on the insurance, certificate of insurance naming us an additional insurer that wasn't included in the packet. Those are just clarifications I was wanting to.
Okay, moving on to MOUs, Upstate County Schools and Community Band.
Yes, we have the MOU between us and the Buckhannon Community Band. This was one that was put together with Mr. Sisk's assistance so that you can see the responsibilities of each of the parties, et cetera, throughout this, and, and what they're actually going to be, excuse me, doing as they work through this this year.
Explain what MOUs are.
MOUs is a memorandum of understanding. So, yes, so for those of you that are listening, it's a memorandum of understanding that can occur between us and an outside agency for activities that would be occurring within our facilities or even utilizing personnel.
Yeah, under, again, just clarification, if you don't mind, responsibilities of the party, facility use, agency is providing keys, is there a custodian on duty, or are there days of use that there's not a custodian?
No, there, there are some, at some, they make the determination at the facility if a custodian is necessary, and as it says there, they are, they do have the co-directors of the band and Upstate County staff members that enable them to have access to the facility.
I, I just wonder how many keys we have floating around.
Well, we don't have keys anymore.
Okay.
It's only these. This is only that way you can get in.
That clarifies that one. The word keys, it's different.
Yeah.
Well, they would have keys to get into their specific classrooms, but the classrooms being utilized are their classrooms.
Yes.
Okay. There's no exhibit E or F in our packet. It's referenced in the agreement, but there's no E or F, so I don't know if the state approved that was in their packet. Don't know. I know I didn't see it, I couldn't find it in our packet.
We may have left that off of yours inadvertently.
And that dealt with insurance-related items and licensure and approval.
And which we have a copy of all those at the board office.
If you'll look under three and four, I believe it gives you some of that information. Insurance and liability and licensure.
Yeah, it talks about attachments, exhibit C.
Yeah, it does. It talks about those attachments, and that was inadvertently left off.
Yeah. I read that section. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. The communities and schools, that district memorandum of agreement, which is just like a memorandum of understanding, this is put together by the state and then delivered to us. Each of the signatures have to be obtained in order for this to be put in place. You will notice that the signatures, we will have to secure the signature of the new principal of the Cannon Academy. We will also have to secure the signature of the new principal at French Creek Elementary so that this will be just and right with those people that will be serving in those roles. However, this was completed prior to any changes that went into effect at the conclusion of the '23, '24 school year. It does lay out for us that we are receiving $240,000 as a grant to the schools to support the implementation of communities and schools model of integrated student supports at each of the schools that are listed. We do have two staff members that are overseeing program implementation and providing training and technical assistance from the department. They do manage an advisory council. They provide in-person training. They do provide a calendar of virtual trainings and support calls when necessary. I know I've called them a couple of times already asking some questions, and they've been very, very responsive. They do deploy any resources or technical assistance if we need it. They have been here and conducted periodic visits to the sites. We do have a budget template and sample that we are using. That was provided, and Casey Bayston did complete that. When they were hired, they had provided the sample site coordinator job descriptions that were used. They do have a dashboard and reporting templates that they fill out each year, and they have the data management system that they also use. We do have that full-time site coordinator in the, several of our schools. We do have a shared arrangement between French Creek and Rock Cave so that there's, there's two there. There's one person that serves both those schools, and then we also have a shared arrangement between Hodginsville and Union. But we do have six people who are serving in those roles.
And who at the board level? What director is over the seat?
Casey Bayston is. And she is assisted by Jody Johnson in some of the trainings and things that do take place. Because what we try to do is we do try to include them in any of the Title I trainings that are, you know, that are held, particularly when it's regarding the family engagement and proper ways of, of doing those particular things so that they're well aware of, of what those look like for us.
Okay, we do not need to take action on the contracts, agreements, or MOUs as they've already been approved through the state?
Correct.
So we will move on to the consent agenda?
Yes, I did include three this evening because I know Mr. Parker had asked about our workers' compensation policy and what that cost was. And the cost is $115,132 per year, and I did want to include that information for you so that you would have that. Again, it's, it goes without saying that we do need to work on assuring that our employees are well-trained and well-versed in safety protocols so that we don't have the need to use workers' compensation funds to help support their needs. One of the things that we continue to reiterate is the, the sooner that you report it, the faster we can get the ball rolling, which will help the employee be able to return to work. In the past, there's not been a return to work effort here. We are working on that return to, return to work effort. We're looking at job responsibilities, and what we're trying to do is we're trying to find the majority of the responsibilities that they would still be able to fulfill in the current role that they're in. And in most cases, doctors have been very, very cooperative in talking through with us. us and the employee, you know, what those things are. So we're working very diligently on that return-to-work aspect of this.
Request to use facilities?
Yes, we do have the two, Diamond Dealers Travel Corp. They're going to use Buckhannon Upsher Middle School, and they filled out the appropriate form for us, as well as the Upsher County complex is going to be using Buckhannon Upsher Middle School, the 15th through the 19th, and the 22nd through the 26th, with all forms filled out and approval process completed.
On the Diamond Dealers Travel?
Yes.
Do they have a certificate of insurance?
Yes, they do.
Okay. The one in our packet doesn't belong to them?
No, it does not, but we got the corrected one.
Okay, thank you.
He attached the wrong one.
Okay.
Field trips?
Yes. Our high school band is going to Canton, Ohio, and they are going to a DCI competition show. They will be attending that, let me see, what date was that? On the 5th of August, returning on the 6th, because they will not be leaving until 2:00 in the afternoon and returning at 2:00 the next morning. So we have transportation worked out with Mr. Reynolds so that our students will be able to go to that. That is, DCI competitions are just a wonderful event for our students to be able to go and observe. They're just, those bands are just phenomenal. So I'm really, I'm thrilled that we're able to have them go.
Again, under consent agenda, we do not need to have a motion as these things have already been approved through the state?
Correct.
We are now on item nine, personal and legal, personnel and legal matters?
Okay. I'm present for members. If you check the personnel sheet that you have, first time in a while, we have no resignations or anything to consider. We are filling positions. We have five professional positions that we have filled from outside. We've hired two more substitute professionals, and we've hired an assistant girl soccer coach. And then we have a series of transfers, trying to fill our administrative professional vacancies. You can see those names there. We're still rapidly trying to move through that process and get those positions filled before our administrative training sessions that begin next week, and we continue to move forward. I thought we turned a corner with resignations. Unfortunately, we did have one or two that have come in in the last few days. None of those were disgruntled situations. They were health issues to a spouse who had gotten a military promotion and had gotten stationed in an state, just unexpected things that have happened, and they, honestly, they did not want to leave but had no choice. So we'll be working hard to fill those as well, but the number of openings is quickly dwindling. Any questions?
I just have one question.
Sure.
Is there criteria for hiring a substitute teacher?
Yes. There are certain certifications for everything we hire, and to be substitute teacher, there's a generic list, a set of forms that have to be filled out, and there's a difference between a substitute teacher and a long-term substitute teacher. Those all are different scenarios. Okay? So when you see in your form, we've hired a substitute teacher, that's a day-to-day sub, basically, depending on the terminology. A long-term sub, or an LTS, is somebody who we have posted a job at least three times. We can't get anybody to fill it, but we have somebody that wants the job, and we can get them on a permit. So they have a certificate in some scenario, and the state will then give them a permit and allow them. And they have to take so many classes per year to maintain that.
Do they have to have, like, a college degree or certain other criteria prior to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. And that's that LTS that you will see? Okay.
Right. Good question.
Oh, I see it. Okay.
Yeah.
One comment for my eyes. It's hard for me to read the titles in a dark blue print, in a black. So if we could do a lighter highlight, my eyes would appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Yellow, light blue, whatever.
I got you.
Future meetings?
Yes, as listed, and please don't forget August the 6th, which we determined this evening. We'll add that to that. And then August the 13th, September 10th, and October the 8th. Again, a reminder that these are subject to change if we would need to add additional
Seeing nothing more that is needed for the good of the order, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move. One second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You have 6:49?
6:49.
Thank you.
6:49.